Cumberland County Board of Commissioners meeting for October the 2nd, 2017 to order. We're going to call on Commissioner Lancaster for the invocation and the pledge, but...
Oh, I'm sorry, let me start over then, thank you. See, good thing y'all keep me in line. I'll open the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners meeting for October the 2nd, 2017. We're going to have the invocation and the pledge led by Commissioner Lancaster, but if we can for just a moment, just have a... If we stand and have a brief moment of silence for those out in Las Vegas.
Would you please pray with me. Wise and loving Father, prayers for those gathered here today. Thank you heavily, Father, for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. I pray for wisdom and the conflicting interest in issues of our times. Prayers for the welfare and true needs of all. May we all possess a keen thirst for justice and a sense of rightness and confidence in what is good and fitting. Father, strengthen our ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Please provide each of us personal peace and joy in all of our tasks. I pray for our agenda set before us today. Please give each of us an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live in and around our beloved county of Cumberland. We ask these things in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go to the recognition of our one-year anniversary of Hurricane Matthew. County Manager, Ms. Cannon.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, Commissioners. As you know, our Public Information Office is trying to place a greater emphasis on telling our story. And telling our story is how does county government impact our citizens through the services that we provide? In that vein, we have recently contracted with two videographers, one of whom is here today. Mr. Larry Shaw, Jr., with Epic Studio Productions is here, and he has worked with us on developing a video related to Hurricane Matthew. The reason that we felt compelled to celebrate the event or recognize the event through a video is that this event was a life-changing event for many in our community. And we... It's an historic event, one that should be documented. And so, this video that you're about to see involves many community partners who kind of tell their story about what their part was or what the thinking was. And Mr. Shaw has done a good job in really making it a documentary for historical preservation of this event. And so, with that, it's about a 15-minute video, and I believe it's appropriate today, right before the one-year anniversary, to recognize this event through this video. So, in order... You'll watch it on this screen, and staff will need to move to the seats right here to be able to see it.
...so that we can talk about a truly historic situation as it relates to the weather. Record levels of flooding along rivers and creeks.
Well, you know, on the anniversary of Hurricane Matthew, I think it's important for us to look back and see what we did right, what we did wrong, and how we can prepare the next time. The one thing I want our citizens to know is you can never be over-prepared.
October 8th, 2016 was one of the few occasions that I've really been intimidated by weather. And that challenge came at 3:30 in the morning when my staff called me and told me that the barn was flooding and that the shelter was in danger of flooding. It was... I've never felt so helpless in my life.
I think when it really hit me deep is when the representatives from FEMA came down, and he said, "This isn't a 100-year flood. This isn't even a 500-year flood. We're talking biblical proportions." And I think that's when it really hit me, how... What kind of tragedy we could be looking at.
In terms of disasters I've experienced in my lifetime, probably the worst was Hurricane Floyd. And at that time, I was working in a coastal community, and we were cut off from the north, the south, and the west for about three days due to floodwaters. So, Hurricane Matthew reminded me a lot of that situation.
Many citizens, long-term native individuals of Cumberland County, never have seen this type of impact in their entire lifetime.
There was so much loss in this storm. There were... Some people lost their homes. Some people lost their jobs. Some people lost pets. Some people... But some people lost their lives. And we have to be cognizant of our responsibilities of this. We hoped... We sat in the EOC many times hoping that there was no lives lost, and it just... It brings a shudder down to all of us when you hear that story and it comes through.
Hurricane Matthew was very catastrophic. We saw numbers in calls and rain that we've never seen before, like rainfall, 15 to 18 inches over parts of Cumberland County. There were over 1,300 rescues from swift water teams. We received over 8,300 911 calls just in the Cumberland County 911 Center. At one point, we had over 506 people in our shelters, with over 1,400 different people registered two weeks of the event. Many areas were flooded that have never seen flooding before, along Rockfish Creek, Little Rockfish Creek, Manchester, as well as some of the tributaries leading from western Cumberland County down to the Cape Fear River. There was over 1,100 homes damaged throughout Cumberland County and the city of Fayetteville, as well as over 150 businesses that were damaged during that time.
Infrastructure was impacted, not only transportation, but our power systems, the power grid, our radio communication systems, our telephone systems. From the water standpoint even, all of those major impacts, our railroad system was impacted. So, in that impact, we were resilient. That is the most powerful thing about not only all of our first responders. There were stories, and there'll be stories told for many years to come, about how we used a tractor to go retrieve someone, how we used a boat, a canoe, or anything that would float or that would move to go rescue themselves. Neighbor helping neighbor, checking on neighbors. People that didn't know each other coming together in response to a catastrophic event.
Another thing that struck me about this more than anything else when I was in the EOC, I saw first responders and staff members from the Health Department and Social Services. They were there, and they didn't have lights in their own house. Their families may not have had lights, and they're struggling themselves, but they knew that their responsibilities were there to take care of the people who needed them, and that was their job. That story was told time and time again as we went through this EOC.
During the response phase, the blessings that we had with the federal teams being local that we were not aware of at the time, when rescue and swift water rescue teams were becoming overwhelmed with rescues, as we said, we had over 1,300 rescues conducted during that timeframe. When we reached out to the state for additional assistance, we found that there were federal teams from New York, New Jersey, Ohio, and Pennsylvania sitting right close by staging. There were staging, if Matthew were to have affected Florida more so than it did, we were very lucky to have them, and they supported us in ways that we could never repay.
We had a boarding facility in the downtown area that gave us a call and said that their facility was being flooded, that the animals were in danger, the people were in danger, and that we... They needed assistance. They needed somewhere to place these animals. By the time we got there, we couldn't even drive up to the facility because of the amount of flooding, how high the waters were at that place. So, people were halfway meeting us, you know, pulling animals, carrying them to the trucks. We were, you know, getting the animals as well, loaded as many as we could. I think all in all, we had about 25 to 30 dogs that we ended up picking up from the facility and bringing them back here to the shelter, animal control.
I said a number of times, when it was impending that we were... That this was going to happen, that Matthew was going to come into Cumberland County, I said, "Nobody blames us for the storm, and everybody appreciates the rescue, but the recovery is where we're going to be judged."
So, during Hurricane Matthew, we operated the shelters in terms of helping to assist Red Cross with the shelter. But in addition to that, Department of Social Services, one of our number-one responsibilities is providing services to citizens who need food assistance, medical assistance, those kinds of things. So, the first thing that we did is we looked at our existing citizens who had lost their food stamp benefits and the food that they had bought with those benefits. And so, even though the county office building was closed, we brought the Department of Social Services staff in early, and we started immediately, under policy, we could replace those citizens who, because of power outages, because they had lost their homes, we could replace their benefits. And so, we came in, and we served almost 6,000 citizens, and we actually were able to replace their benefits.
In terms of what we've accomplished in recovery and resilience, working with our partners at FEMA and the state of North Carolina, and of course, our local municipalities, we've been able to roll out a number of different programs. A number of these have been done through community development agencies. So, those are really the go-to people when it comes to trying to figure out how to best meet the needs of individuals, because everybody's needs are unique. Some people may have had flood insurance. Some people may have been renters. Some of them may have been homeowners. So, everybody's different in terms of their needs, and it's worthwhile for them to make an appointment with our Community Development Department to be able to sit down and have an interview and just decide with them what may or may not be possible in terms of different disaster recovery grants and assistance.
And one of the responsibilities under the county emergency plan is for us to work with the different county agencies and community agencies to make sure that during the response efforts, that before Red Cross, before other agencies can get involved, that we have means for our citizens to access services immediately after the event. Different churches, different organizations came together, and we started identifying what were food needs, and we were able, through Second Harvest Food Bank, to set up food pantries all over the county so that people would be... Have access to food. We had Salvation Army that was working with us on clothing donations and furniture donations, because a lot of people lost everything. They lost all their clothes, so immediately after the event, they needed clothes, and we worked with them, and then various other organizations that assisted. And so, that's the first piece of the unmet needs, is how do you immediately respond after the event to meet those immediate needs? Now, through the Cumberland Recovery Disaster Coalition, where now volunteers assume that role. And so, they've continued the work of the Unmet Needs Committee, and now they've expanded it to your faith communities and different agencies, and they come together to say, "What are the needs after everybody's gone?"
Well, what stands out to me most at this point in time would be exactly where we're standing, you know, over Cross Creek, directly behind our headquarters library in the background. This right here was completely inundated with floodwaters during Hurricane Matthew. Some of the other areas, obviously, that were very highly impacted for our community was the area around Rockfish Creek. And we have several facilities along Rockfish Creek that were, again, severely impacted from the floodwaters from Hurricane Matthew. One of the ones that comes to mind is McCauley Container Site, which is located off Research Drive. And obviously, after a storm event, you lose power. People have got to get rid of their debris. Food in the refrigerator, stuff that got flooded, or whatever impacts they may have, they need that site to get that material to. And obviously, I would commend our Sodaway staff. Donnie Tew and his staff done a tremendous amount of work. You know, we were impacted, and we had that site completely opened back up that same week. Animal Control was another area we had, next to our Sheriff's Training Center. We had a bomb bunker that was completely inundated, so we have to replace that. We're in the process of doing that now. And then, our animal control facility, we had the horse barn that, you know, also was impacted by floodwaters, some significant erosion going on there, and we've got that underway and completed.
Early in this conversation, I spoke about the representative of FEMA coming and saying that this wasn't a 100-year flood or a 500-year flood, but a biblical proportion. But as soon as he said that, I realized that in a month, we may get another one. And even this year, 12 months later, we were right in the path of another destructive storm that could have come. I think we had a lot of lessons learned, and one of the lessons that we had learned was be prepared all the way up to the day that it could happen to you.
Preparedness, that is, when you are prepared, generally, you have a very successful outcome, maintaining safety, maintaining situational awareness, being aware of, researching where you live, making sure you understand the pathways to safety if you need to evacuate your residents. But also, don't forget that emergency preparedness kit, that 72-hour timeframe where you need to make sure that you have proper water provisions, hygiene, and all those areas, medicine, documents, important legal papers. Make sure that you have that weather ready. And also, don't forget our mass communication or awareness, Cumberland Alerts. That is paramount.
I think in every disaster, there's always something alight at the end. I tell people that when the hurricane comes, you have all the wind and the rain, and as soon as it leaves, it's usually one of the most beautiful days you've ever seen in terms of the sun being out. And I think what we want citizens to know is, first of all, preparation. You can never prepare enough. And that's one of the roles of the CDRC, is also to promote and educate around preparation, and you just can't prepare enough. I certainly hope that our citizens will register with Cumberland Alerts. That is so very important. Find your insurance papers. Take the time to learn what's covered. What is your disaster plan? What is your evacuation plan? Because it saves lives. And in Cumberland County, disasters are a reality.
I am proud of the men and women of Cumberland County, of what they did during that hurricane. But more important, what they're doing now after this hurricane. The hurricane, we weathered that storm. The next storm is the recovery, and that one is a lot longer, and it's a lot more difficult. I learned that. I thought the storm was going to be the most difficult part, surviving that, but the recovery, the people who were impacted, the people who were lost, that lost everything, and when they talk to you, and you see it in their eyes, and you feel it in their heart, and you can't help but feel for them. One of the things I tell the citizens here, to know that we're going to be with them to the very end. We're going to see this recovery through. And that's why it's important to look back, to look back at Hurricane Matthew, to say, "Let's learn things. Let's be prepared, and let's get ready for the future."
You know about... The only thing I can say is wow. And as we look back, thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Shaw, stand up. Epic, you did an excellent job. We want to thank you.[1094.24][1094.24](APPLAUSE). But it does make us, as we look back, and we were down in the EOC, and it was a terrible, terrible day and moments after that, but I think you captured it well. I want to thank everybody who took the time to be in that video, but more than that, I want to thank people in this community, first of all, staff who, you know, as we were suffering, you all were here, and y'all were working, those first responders, we had people from New York. But our everyday citizen that was just right here, helping neighbor, neighbor helping neighbor. That's what this community is about. I think it's what will always be about. And, you know, as we talk about this, as I came on as chairman, we talked about this, and this board talked about this, of us telling our story. And I think that's what we just did, is what we're about. And I think we need to send it out to all the media outlets and to the libraries and to all of those places so that people can see what happened. And we are still in recovery. We are still doing that, and any commissioner who wants to weigh in, but thank you so very much for that. Thank you all. I think it was wonderful.[1174.83][1174.83](APPLAUSE).
One question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it possible for this to be played? I know it would be played on Cumberland Matters, but at our next meeting, which is at night, so we can make sure that we touch as many people as possible with this video. I think it's excellent. It shows again the hard work of staff and the fact that they're working 24/7. It was very well captured. It's magical... Well, I can't say magical. It's epic.
Yeah. There you go. Epic.
Epic. Thank you.
Yeah. I'll call on the county manager. Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, could we please remove the attorney-client under closed session, please?
Yes.
We still need the economic development.
All right. That's number two up under number six. I call for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
And let me take this opportunity. Commissioner Evans did alert us that he would not be at the meeting today. He had a conflict in his schedule. The consent agenda, Mr. Keefe.
Yes, sir. I'd like to remove item 2G2. 2G2.
Oh, G2, okay. 2G2. Department of Social Services Budget Ordinance. Anyone else have anything to pull?
And, Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation, we approve the consent agenda without item 2G2.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
And I will just take a moment to, up under that consent item under 2F, was approval. We just approved a proclamation recognizing October 27th as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Just to let you know that the commissioners really mean that when they talk about that. We all have on our ties for breast cancer awareness, and Commissioner... Council, there you go, is wearing her pink, and we'll take a picture shortly after this, because I think it touches everybody, whether it's your mother, your sister, your aunt. It just touches everybody, and I think it's... We need to make sure that folk are aware and know that this community... Because we're in the people business, and that's what we do in the health business. So, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. With that, we will go to item 2G2. Madam Manager to explain it, and then to Mr. Keefe. Or to Mr. Keefe.
I'll be happy to start off.
Yeah.
Item 2G2 is an initiative to assist with energy assistance. The item number says in the amount of $16,000 to actually contract with the Salvation Army to do this service. Correct? I just... And this is where I have a little bit of an issue. We have worked three and four and five years trying to get social services more connected with the people that need their services through NCFAST. And now, what we're doing is we're actually contracting with a nonprofit to provide a service for the low-income people in our community. And the Salvation Army is a great organization. They have great records. They have a history of doing things very well. But once we contract with an outside agency, we lose the transparency sometimes that we have. So, my point is, the purpose of NCFAST was to be able to connect residents who need social services better, but by taking them out of that, I don't imagine that Salvation Army is going to have access to NCFAST. But we may be doing double duty. The other thing is, collectively, it is a $250,000 contract. We had budgeted $235,000. This is an additional 16, I believe. So, I'm just not sure that... I haven't been convinced through the documentation that is the best course of action for helping people collectively get the services that they need. And any explanation would be appreciated.
Well, and I'll go to Mr. Booth and then to the county manager, so you can answer all the questions that went up. But I have talked with Ms. Jackson over at DSS, and she thinks this is the most efficient way, from what I understand, of being able to do these funds, and so, I will go with that. Mr. Booth.
My question was, is how long is the contract? Is it annually renewable? Is it something we're going to need short term to kind of catch up, or is this kind of we're assigning this forever from this point on?
No, I believe it's a contract that is just a one-year contract. I believe that the Salvation Army has probably provided this service through a contract for the county for at least the last six to seven years. Before that time period, we actually did the eligibility piece in-house. It involved trying to gear up and to hire people, and actually, the Salvation Army can administer it at a lower cost than the county can, which puts more money out there for provision of services. And so, we can certainly look at this arrangement again, but I've had some conversation with Ms. Jackson. Actually, there was a question in the summertime about the Salvation Army's ability to do this, and so, she went through a process and still believes that this is the most economical way to do this. I'm not sure that NCFAST has been set up for the LIET program and the SIP program, so I'm not sure that that's a program yet that can be administered through NCFAST.
Commissioner Keefe.
Well, a couple of things, if I can follow up on that. Well, that is the purpose of NCFAST, though, is connect all the services that they do. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm the liaison for social services. I hadn't got the information you had on that, so...
Well, I asked, you know, because I had the same concern that you had as to why the Salvation Army was doing it. They were moving, so I had those same... So, same concern.
Collectively, is this $235,000 for the contract administration, or is this also to assist in the actual payment of the energy?
Yes. The whole $235,000 or $50,000 is not to pay Salvation Army. That includes the actual dollars that go to the citizens.
Okay, that was not very clear. I did not understand that.
Yes, sir.
But do we know how much we're actually paying in the energy assistance program?
Paying for administration.
Well, either way.
Either way.
Yeah. For administration or for the service?
I believe there's over $250,000 budgeted. I'm not sure of the total, but I can certainly get that information.
And my concern was that we were paying $250,000 to the Salvation Army to administer this program, but not for the service of this energy?
No, it was my understanding in some of the conversations that the bulk of the money is what's going to the citizens out of that $253. Actual amount that Salvation Army is a small amount, which is why they can do it more efficiently than the county could do it in terms of hiring people.
Okay. And do they pay the individual for energy assistance, or do they pay directly to the utility?
Normally, they pay directly to the utility.
Normally?
They pay the utility.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner...
Oh, no.
You sure? Because Commissioner Booth had one else.
That was another my question. This is... Does this become a county employee for the year?
No, they're hired by the Salvation Army.
I was just looking at if it's... A portion of this is equal to or less than our current rate for someone to do the same type of work. It seems to be long-term to go ahead and give Brenda the help perennially, just, you know, on. If this is something we've done for six or seven years, and it's going to always come down the pike, and part of this is a salary for somebody, I think we ought to look at long-term, making this some way that she can count on without having to come back every year to negotiate it.
Well, that would involve adding county money to a federal program, because this program is only time-limited, I believe, from November through about February or March. So, dollars in this program and to have staffing year-round would involve adding additional county funding.
Okay. Where is the additional 16 to get us from 235 to 251?
The budget that was established was just based on a budget estimate back last February, and this is a reconciliation of the total amount that's been granted by the federal government for this program for this year.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Keefe. Yes, based on the clarification, I understand the purpose of the program. It should be noted that in the documentation, it does say that they had over 10,000 requests for it, so there's obviously a lot of interest in this program. So, based on the information I received, I'll make a motion to approve item G... I'm sorry, 2G2.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Unanimous.
That would take a... That would take us to public hearing on the proposed economic development incentives for Project Virtual.
Yes, sir.
Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This morning, we are asking to hold a public hearing. This is for an existing industry. It is to retain 53 existing jobs and to create up to 75 new jobs with an average salary of $58,000 plus a comprehensive benefits package. The company would invest approximately $600,000 in real and personal property. In addition to this, we're asking for an incentive package, it's for a local incentive grant, not to exceed $37,500, which would also be matched by the city of Fayetteville. The notice of public hearing was published September 21st, and so the recommendation today is to hold the public hearing for Project Virtual, and after the public hearing, to consider approval of the local incentive not to exceed $37,500, and also to approve Budget Ordinance Amendment B-180708, which appropriates fund balance for this incentive grant.
Okay. All right. We have the public hearings, I'll open the public hearing on the proposed economic development incentives for Project Virtual. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
With there being no speakers, I will close the public hearing. I'll ask the commissioners, is there's any questions or comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the local incentive grant in an amount not to exceed $37,500, and approve Budget Ordinance Amendment B-180352, which appropriates fund balance for this incentive grant.
I think it might be 0718.
What did I say?
I think it's B-180708.
I can't see it.
Second motion.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
That will take us to the items of business, nominations to boards and committees, animal Commissioner Faircliff.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would nominate, this is nomination, okay, I would nominate Shannon Pingatory.
Okay.
As recommended by the Fayetteville City Council, it's their slot.
Okay. All right. With there, no other nominations, we'll go to the Library Board of Trustees, which has two vacancies, call for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Paige Ross and Brian Tyler.
And we do have our representative from the library here, the, actually, the president of the Library Board of Trustees. Thanks to have you here today. That takes us to item number five, appointments to boards and committees, the Fayetteville-Cumberland County Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I will tell you that I received an email last week that Ms. Pam Story asked her name to be pulled from that. We, she is a social worker, and after the newspaper article and all of that, thinks that she can give some service to the county in a much better, in a, in a different manner. So she asked her name be pulled on this, but to be capped up if we, in terms of what we do with some of those items that we did with foster care and children. So with that, my vice chairman is not here, so somebody will make the motion. I think we only have one nominee, Mr. Lee Spruill.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that since there's one vacancy and one nominee currently, that we approve the appointment to the Fayetteville-Cumberland Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission of Mr. Lee Spruill.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any questions? All those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right. With that, I will entertain a motion to clo, to go into closed session for economic development matter. Commissioner Faircliff.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move that the board go into closed session for the purpose of economic development matter pursuant to N.C. General Statute 143, 318 dot 11A4.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
We will go into closed session.